It is no longer an active application and there will be no hearing tonight on 225 Lake Hamilton Drive. So if you came for that item, thank you for coming and you're free to go. If you are here for another item, please sign up in the back if you intend to speak. There's a sheet for each item that Planning Commission will hear tonight. If you intend to speak, we need you to sign up on that sheet for the item so that we can call you when it is time to testify. Thank you.
All right, we're going to go ahead and call to order the Planning Commission meeting for November the 9th. If everybody will stand and please join us in invocation led by Commissioner Davis and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Bledsoe.
May we bow heads? Father, in the name of Jesus, we come right now just to tell you thank you. Now God, as we come before you in your presence, we ask that all things be done decent and in order and that our work here is pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Director Selman, will you please announce tonight's meeting procedures?
Thank you. First of all, as the Planning Commissioners and any members of the public who intend to speak, please be clearly into the microphones so that everyone can hear. The meeting is being recorded and in order to get your comments correctly in the minutes, you need to be about this far from the microphone. So looks like everybody's good. Thanks. When your name is called, please come to the podium. Please address your comments to Planning Commission and not to the audience. Any questions you ask will be answered once everyone who has signed up has spoken. We understand you have strong feelings, one way or the other sometimes, about these items. Of courtesy, unless it is your turn to speak, please remain silent. Please refrain from applauding, cheering, booing, or other verbal outbursts. This is a fact-finding hearing. There is no need to repeat what has already been said. If a previous speaker stated the points you wish to make, you may simply acknowledge that so that the hearing may proceed. The applicant will have five minutes to speak. Other speakers each will have three minutes. We ask that you respect the time limit.
Thank you very much, Director Selman. Mr. Stotter, will you please call the roll?
Ramick, Sharma, Erickson.
Present.
Stafford.
Present.
Scott. Gurkey.
Present.
Lamond.
Davis.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Val. Hobbie.
Present, thank you very much. May I have a motion and a second for the approval of last month's minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda, but we do have an amendment. Item number three will be withdrawn from the application. May I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's amended agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The first matter of business is the consent agenda. At this time, Commissioner Gurkey will have to recuse himself. Director Selman, will you please present the consent agenda?
Thank you. We have two items on the consent agenda. The first is item number one, CU 23-160. It is at 121 Grove Street, Vapor Valley Gallery and Studios. This is a conditional use application request for an artist gallery and studios in the CTR Zone District. Recommendation is approval with seven conditions. I'm going to read those conditions into the record. "All construction and construction activity are to be accomplished in strict accordance with all applicable approval conditions and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, and regulations and policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, the State of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval." Number two, "The development site shall be constructed and developed in strict accordance with the approved site and development plan and with his Pleasant Street Historic District approval, including but not limited to location of buildings, drives, sign, parking, and landscaping." Number three, "Separate permit application shall be made by the applicant to Hot Springs Engineering Department and permits shall be in hand for stormwater, drainage, and sidewalks, as may be required prior to opening." Number four, "No development signs are being reviewed or permitted as part of this conditional use review. Historic District Commission approval and separate sign permit application, review, approval, and permit shall be required prior to installation of any signs on this site." Number five, "Any new exterior lighting shall be fully downcast and full cutoff and shall contain all illumination on the subject property. Lighting shall be positioned so as not to create a nuisance to any adjacent properties." Number six, "The use and activity shall not impose any undue hardship or nuisance upon the nearby neighborhood." And number seven, "The applicant has an affirmative responsibility to demonstrate ongoing compliance with the conditions of this approval. The violation of any of these conditions so imposed shall constitute grounds for revocation or modification of this conditional use permit by the Planning Commission per Hot Springs Code Section 16279H." Number two, SPA 23171, this is a site plan development request at 824 Central Avenue to construct a multi-story hotel on the subject property. The recommendation is to approve with ten conditions, and I will read those conditions into the record. Number one, "The development site shall be constructed and developed in strict accordance with the approved site plan and development plan, including but not limited to location of buildings, drives, parking, and landscaping." Number two, "All construction and construction activity are to be accomplished in strict accordance with all applicable approval conditions and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, and regulations and policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, the State of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval." Number three, "All exterior lighting shall be fully shielded, downcast, and shall retain light within the property." Number four, "No signs were reviewed or approved as part of this application. Business identification signs will require separate application, review, approval, and permit prior to their installation." Number five, "Separate permit application shall be made by the applicant to Hot Springs Engineering Department and permits shall be in hand for any stormwater, drainage, and sidewalk repairs prior to beginning any work as may be required." Number six, "Before building permit can be issued, the Utilities Department requires a note to be placed on the Utility Plan C107 to call out a four-inch water meter, and the fire protection main to the building should be ductile iron pipe." Number seven, "Before building permit, the Fire Department will require that driveways cannot be more than 10% grade. Sprinkler system and stand pipe system are required. The Fire Department connection must be within 100 feet of the fire hydrant. Remote Fire Department connections are acceptable." Number eight, "The applicant has an affirmative responsibility to demonstrate ongoing compliance with the site plan and with the conditions of this approval." Number nine, "Sidewalk and right-of-way occupation during construction requires specific mitigation measures subject to prior approvals and permits by the City of Hot Springs and the Arkansas Department of Transportation." And finally, number 10, "Multiple building or large-scale site plans approved by the Planning Commission shall be effective for one year from the date of approval, in this case to expire November 9, 2024. Prior to its expiration date, the Director of Planning and Development may extend the original site plan approval for up to two one-year periods upon the applicant's written request. Planning Commission approval of any project that has not fully secured all required permits within the period of time set forth shall be null and void." And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Director Selman. Again, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent agenda with staff findings and recommendations. At this time, Mr. Stotter-
There was nobody signed up on either one of those items.
Okay, thank you so very much. At this time, Mr. Stotter, with you, please call the roll.
Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Gurkey? Gurkey recused?
Yes.
Yes, he is recused.
Sorry. Davis?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Hobbie?
Approve, thank you very much.
Okay, items number one and two are approved.
Thank you very much. The next matter of business is new business. Director Selman, will you please introduce the next item?
The next item is item number four, and I believe we have a recusal on item number four.
We do. Thank you very much. We're going to get your work out in.
Item number four is PD 23-147, a zone change application to request from R4 zoning to planned development, PD zoning with a site plan, excuse me, for an expansion to the Finish Line RV Park project at 117 Pyron Street.
Oh, thank you very much. I was looking up the board meeting date. The motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion to approve and second does not mean that you're nearly in favor of the application and may just have a motion to, and a second to approve the item to be on the floor. Director Selman, will you please present the staff report on item number four?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is Mr. Bear Davidson with Davidson Engineering, representing the property owner Silver Spur Properties LLC, seeking planned development zoning with site plan approval to expand the existing Finish Line RV Park to include a clubhouse, pool, and food truck area. Subject property is approximately .41 acres. It's currently zoned R4 medium-high density residential. This property also has a future land use plan map designation of residential medium-high and is located in Board of Directors District Number Five. The site is surrounded on three sides by property also zoned R4 medium-high density residential and on one side PD planned development. The surrounding land uses includes single-family residential. Undeveloped land to the northeast is Oaklawn Jockey Club Storage and Finish Line RV Park, which is PD planned development to the west end, is owned by the applicant. The requirements of the approval have been demonstrated on the submitted site and development plans prepared by Davidson Engineering. From Golf Links Road, the private street inside Finish Line RV Park will provide access to the development. A new pedestrian sidewalk is proposed along Pyron, Kuka, and Sunnyside Streets. This development will be accessed only from the existing private street inside Finish Line RV Park. The project will use both city water and city sewer, and those services are available in the area. The project plans and drawings were reviewed by the Development Review Committee on October 17, 2023, and any requested changes as a result of that meeting have been made on revised plans. The zone change finding is that the requested change from R4 medium-high density residential to PD for the proposed expansion of Finish Line RV Park planned development and with a future land use plan map designation amendment to linear commercial corridor, the subject property meets the standards for favorable consideration according to Hot Springs Code Section 16247E, and all individual elements of the application apply. The recommendation to Planning Commission is that you recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance amending the zoning map designating the subject property PD planned development and the future land use plan map designating the subject property linear commercial corridor with the conditions, there are eight conditions, because Planning Commission has made the finding that the requested change meets the standards required by Hot Springs Code Section 16247E. The change helps to implement and approve city plan and is compatible with surrounding development and zoning. With regard to the site plan, the site plan and other materials submitted comply with the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section 16247 and other Hot Springs Codes applicable to this review, subject to compliance with eight conditions of approval. The recommendation is regarding the site plan, to approve the planned development zone district with approved uses and site plan for the expansion of Finish Line RV Park located on approximately .41 acres, subject to the following conditions, because when these conditions are applied, the application complies with the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section 16247, and we will be reading the eight conditions. Thank you. Number one, "All construction and construction activity is to be accomplished in strict accordance with development plan and all approval conditions with the minimum standards, codes, rules, regulations, and policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, the State of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval." Number two, "The development site shall be constructed and developed in strict accordance with the approved planned development site plan, including but not limited to street construction, sidewalks, detention areas, green and open spaces, parking, landscaping, and utilities." Number three, "Full and continuous compliance with all applicable stormwater permitting and water quality regulations." Number four, "Retaining walls must be on private property." Number five, "Prior to placement of mobile food units within the planned development, a mobile food application must be submitted and receive all necessary approvals." Number six, "All common elements shall be privately owned and maintained and shall not be the responsibility of the City of Hot Springs." Number seven, "Uses within this PD are hereby limited to clubhouse, pool, mobile food, parking, and green space for Finish Line RV Park. Should private drive or street naming be required or desired, an application must be filed and approved by the Planning and Development Department's 901 Addressing Office." That concludes the report.
Thank you very much, Director Selman. At this time, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Just the applicant.
If the applicant will please come forward, speak clearly into the microphones, state your name and address. You have five minutes to present anything that was not brought up in the director's report.
My name is Jason Bautnitz with Davidson Engineering. We're at 210 West Arch Street, Sosse, Arkansas. Everything, we agree to all the conditions that were brought up.
At this portion, Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I have no questions. No questions.
If you don't have anything further to add, thank you very much for coming up and the public portions to this item are now closed. At this time, Commissioners, we'll go ahead and call the roll. The motion is to approve item number four with staff findings and recommendations.
Stafford?
Approve.
Davis?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
Hobbie?
Approve, thank you very much. Commissioner Erickson, would you, okay, there we go. Thank you very much. Director Selman, will you please introduce item number five?
Yes, thank you. Item number five is a rezone request, number 23-163, 429 Oaklawn Street, a zone change application from R3 to CTR for property at 429 Oaklawn.
Thank you very much. And again, a motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and a second does not necessarily mean that you're in favor of this particular application. May I have a motion and a second to approve item number five?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Director Selman, will you please present the staff report on item number five?
Yes, thank you. The property owner, Mr. James Goodson, seeks zone change consideration from R3 low-density residential to CTR Commercial Transitional District for property located at 429 Oaklawn Street. It is currently zoned R3, has a future land use plan map designation of residential medium-high, and is located in Board of Directors District Number Four. This is unplatted land, approximately .41 acres. It is improved with a 1,392-square-foot, single-family residential structure, which was built in approximately 1940. This neighborhood is primarily single-family residential detached structures, multifamily residential structures, manufactured home park, religious institution, City of Hot Springs Public Works Maintenance Facility, and an elementary school. The surrounding zoning is as follows. On the north, it is R3. On the east, it is R3. On the south is CTR. On the west is R3. And the surrounding land use is as follows. On the north, single-family residential. To the east, vacant land. To the south, religious institution. And to the west, single-family residential. The application narrative states the proposed use would be to develop multiple single-family townhomes that would encourage innovative adaptive reuse of the property. Subject property is surrounded by R3 low-density residential district zoning, with the exception of the CTR zoning to the south. The CTR zone contains a religious institution addressed at 350 Alpine Street. Per Hot Springs Code Section 162152 Table of Permitted Uses, the proposed dwelling, comma, townhouse, is prohibited in the current R3 low-density residential zone and would be permitted in the requested CTR Commercial Transitional Zone with up to a 12-unit-per-acre density. The 12-unit-per-acre density regulation would limit the number of attached townhomes on this property to four as a permitted use. The stated dwelling-townhouse use is conceptual and non-binding. Should CTR zoning be established, any non-residential use or a residential density of over 12 units per acre would require conditional use consideration by Planning Commission. Hot Springs Code Section 16211E1 states in part, "The Planning Commission shall make a specific finding as to whether the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development or zoning, is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code, implements an approved city plan, responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use, or other condition, fulfills a demonstrated public need for land so zoned, or corrects an error in previous city action." The proposed request responds to these findings in the following ways. The applicant submitted an eight-page narrative describing the request in detail and building the case for Planning Commission consideration. The application narrative lists multiple excerpts from Hot Springs 2040 Forward Hot Springs Comprehensive Plan to provide a link between the plan's goals, strategies, and vision in this rezone request. Most of the referenced excerpts involve neighborhood revitalization, neighborhood redevelopment, providing a variety of housing types, and enhancing the image of the city. The narrative also lists multiple properties in the general vicinity that either contain multifamily dwellings or more than one home on the lot according to the applicant, and he includes properties on Oaklawn, Oakwood, Henderson, Crestwood, and Central Avenue. The narrative concludes with a statement zoning the property at 429 Oaklawn from R3 to CTR would support the Hot Springs 2040 Forward Hot Springs Comprehensive Plan. This narrative appears to address certain findings for implements and approved city plan, and the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning. Hot Springs 2040 Forward Hot Springs Comprehensive Plan identifies this area of Hot Springs as near-town neighborhoods. Vision statement of the near-town statements reads, "Near-town neighborhoods," reads as follows. Like the in-town neighborhoods, the near-town neighborhoods such as the neighborhoods that surround Oaklawn can be revitalized over time to support higher housing densities and enhanced image and a better quality of place and economic opportunities. The proposed multiple single-family townhome use appears to be consistent with the stated planning and performance criteria, high mix of housing density to include duplexes, townhouses, multifamily, and mixed-use buildings. The requested CTR zoning and proposed multiple family, multiple single-family townhomes appears consistent with change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, a finding requirement in the code. The narrative addresses specific findings for implements and approved city plan and demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning. However, the application fails to demonstrate how the request responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use, or other conditions, nor that it fulfills a demonstrated public need for land so zoned, nor that it creates and corrects an error in previous city action as required by the code. Should this property be rezoned to CTR Commercial Transitional District, it would afford the complete list of permitted and conditional uses as designed detailed in the code Table of Permitted Uses, including a variety of commercial uses. It would also allow for the unrestricted issuance of short-term residential rental licenses. As per the Hot Springs Code Section 16210E, number two, beginning January 1, 2023, the aggregate maximum allowable number of short-term residential rental business licenses for transient use sites other than those within a horizontal property regime established pursuant to ACA 1813101 and filed of record prior to January 18, 2022, located within a planned development zoning district established after January 18, 2022, or within zoning districts R1, R2, R3, R4, and RL, shall not exceed 400 per calendar year. Once that number falls below 400, any any applications at that time could be accepted. As of this time, no applications for residential short-term rentals are available. The Hot Springs Code requires that you make a recommendation to the board setting forth a basis for your recommendation. Public notification and publication requirements were met. The finding is that the request met submission requirements for zone change consideration. The property's future land use map designation of residential medium-high is consistent with current zoning of R3, but does not support the requested CTR Commercial Transitional District zoning. The application fails to adequately address some of the review criteria and findings of fact found in Hot Springs Code Section 16211E1. The application fails to convincingly demonstrate that a zone change from R3 low-density residential district to CTR Commercial Transitional District complies with the stated concept and description for the CTR zone as stated in Hot Springs Code Section 16249A. The application also fails to demonstrate how the request responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use, or other conditions, nor that it fulfills a demonstrated public need for land so zoned, nor that it corrects an error in previous city action. The zone change request to commercial transitional appears to be premature. The requirements for zone change in Hot Springs Code are not met. The recommendation is that Planning Commission not recommend the Board of Directors a proven ordinance amending the zoning map from R3 low-density residential district to CTR Commercial Transitional District for the subject property because the application fails to meet the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section 1621E.
Thank you very much, Director Selman. Mr. Starter, is there anybody signed up to speak on item number five? Well, thank you very much. At this time, will the applicant please come forward, give your name, your address, speak clearly into the microphone, and please add anything to the record that was not presented in Director Selman's report.
I'm James Goodson, owner of the 429 property. We just wanted to try to make it better. So I said everything on the application there that we're new at this, but we were just trying to make the neighborhood better, so.
I think we all thank you for that. At this time, directors, do you have any questions for the applicant?
How are you going to make it better?
Well, we were wanting to, it's got, as you can see, the house is just falling apart. The only way financially that we could bring this back to where this is going to make this better, I can't redo this house to make it nice. All we're going to be able to do is if we redo this house, then we're going to attract people that necessarily don't make the area better. In other words, they're, you know, very low, that they don't want to, you know, pay the rent and stuff like that, so. We wanted to make it new. We want to make it nice. We want to make it where it's got a couple really nice houses in the neighborhood, and we just, you know, I feel like that if we make it and put some townhomes there, then it'll pay for itself. You know, it'll be able, we'll be able to get the money to actually make that area better. The house better, you know, and the people that will put in it will pay for it. So we just don't super lose on the deal.
So is renters?
Well, no. I really want to target selling, you know, is, we're not to that point yet, so.
Well, we do appreciate your explanation for everything, but Director David, we literally are just looking at the land itself, not what's going to go into the land. No, 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 there's no apologies. I just, I just want to make sure that we're completely clear that we're just looking at the land at this point.
Right. Well, and to make this land better, to make this land better, I mean, we'll have to do quite a bit of adjustment to the land. We'll have to take some of the trees out. I have to remove the fences. We'll have to, you know, there's a really nice house beside us, so, you know, without just completely demolishing it and putting something really nice there. And it might be so much as, you know, just a great big house, but it's a I really got a really nice design on a townhome I would like to put there, you know, so. And however many it will take, I think, I believe it's like 12 per acre, and I think the acreage has come down. I think we've decided on around three, you know, so. It would just make the land better. It would make, it's a church right behind it, so it's a really nice area. If, you know, if we clean it out a little bit and we get, so we're just making it better. The, across the street, you know, it's, it's not a great area. It's just got some mobile homes and stuff, and they're kind of run down and everything. But eventually, with this 2040, you know, comprehensive Hot Springs plan that, you know, I'm sure everything will come around, so it'll just fit in. We'll just fit in with it, so. This house won't fit in, so.
Well, we appreciate. Thank you very much. Any other questions, commissioners?
Yes, go ahead and stay up here for a second, if you don't mind. Now, this particular application, it's just because the application was vague?
No, they want to transition, or they want it to go to a CTR, and it's zoned R3.
Yes.
So with, is there, is there another, is there another zoning designation that would fit it better for his goal?
The future land use plan map calls for the zoning that is there or possibly residential high-density R4, but he does not have an adequately sized lot to make that request. Now, he does have an adequately sized lot to request CTR, which he has done, but CTR requires a comprehensive plan designation of convenience, commercial office center, or commercial enclave. So this does not fit the future land use plan map for the area at this time.
So it opens the land up for potential use for something other than?
It does.
It does. It's, there's just, I think, other things that have to backfill.
Director Selman, I noticed in the report that it said this may be too early to make this request.
Yes.
What conditions would, just for the sake of our applicant, what conditions would move us down the line to where that might make sense?
There are a couple of things. One would be the development code that is underway right now. We expect that it'll be complete within probably 12 months. One of the things that we are looking for is a much smaller minimum lot size so that developments such as you're proposing would be possible on a small piece of land without going to a commercial zone district like this. I know that you, your plan doesn't include waiting. I'm sure it doesn't. No one's does. But there will be things coming forward that will open the door to greater opportunity for building affordable homes. At this time, we don't have it, and CTR provides too great an array of other uses that are possible. I know that's not what you intend tonight, but who knows what the future will bring? And someone who might own it following you might have his eye on doing some of these other uses, of which there are dozens, which are non-residential.
The way the current code is, there isn't a, there isn't a designation for what you're looking to do. And I represent District Four. This is my neighborhood. What you are proposing is exactly what that would need, you know, for housing, especially right down the street from the school. But if you could, if you could just reapply, don't, don't jump off the bridge. It's, yeah.
Well, we don't give up easy, but I'm sure we'll reply, because that's what we got in plan. It's a, you know, it's, it's a nice area, you know. It's, I own another house right up the street, three or four houses up the street, so we're redoing that right now also, so. It's, it's too little of a lot to do anything but to make it real nice across from the school there.
Right, and, you know, putting a newer, larger home in there wouldn't necessarily fit. I understand where you're going with it. I agree with what you're, with what your plan is, but we don't have a way to ensure that your plan is what's going to happen if we improve it as a commercial.
Because we only look at that land use during this application, and, and we're just a recommendation to the city board. So keep doing what you're doing.
I gotta get somebody smarter to talk for me.
No, no, with the Passion and emotion, that's, that's who we are.
Well, and our city code has needed a makeover for quite some time, and we are in the process of making it over, so everything's going to line up. It's just not lining up tonight.
I understand, I understand. I'm good with it. It's a, it's a, it's just a project.
We thank you for that. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, at this time, the public portion is now closed. Let's go ahead and call roll. No, no.
Do you want to clarify on the vote? Because this was a motion to?
Yes.
This is a motion to approve with staff findings and recommendations, and the recommendation is at this time not to approve the transition to CTR.
Right, so. Right, so, a vote for the motion to deny, you vote yes, which means no.
Was the motion that brought it to the floor was to approve, right?
Approve with staff findings and recommendations.
Right.
Approve this, yeah.
Right. And also, this is an item that requires five affirmative votes to proceed to the Board of Directors, and that's votes to approve, which would be a no, so.
Kathy, is there any way of putting CTR on it and restricting it?
Um, there is not.
Okay.
Yep.
So, a yes vote denies it, and a no vote would approve it, is that what we're saying?
A yes vote.
Is with staff findings and recommendations, which is not to approve.
Right. So, a yes means a recommendation to the Board not to approve it.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody was clear on that. So, we ready to vote?
You can sit down. Thank you very much.
Ready to proceed with the vote?
Please call the roll.
Okay. Gerke?
Yes.
Janice Davis?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Stafford?
Approve.
Hobbie?
Approve, thank you very much.
Okay, the motion is to not recommend approval to the Board. With a vote, a motion to not recommend approval to the Board, the item will not proceed to the Board unless appealed by the applicant, and as the applicant, you have 30 days to appeal. If you believe you would like to make that appeal, you can get with Mr. Stoudt, and he will make that happen.
Thank you very much. Director Solomon, will you please introduce item number six?
Yes, thank you. Item number six is a request to, do I have the right item?
Yeah, it's a, is a zoning change.
Yes. Okay. Item number six is a request to change zoning from R3 low-density residential to CTR, Commercial Transitional District, for property located at 143 Oakwood Avenue. Property is currently zoned R3, has a future land use plan map designation of residential medium-high, and is located in Board of Directors District Number 2.
Thank you very much. A motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion, a motion in a second does not mean that you're necessarily in favor of the application. May I have a motion and a second to approve item number six?
Still move.
Second.
Thank you. Director Solomon, will you please present the staff report on item number six?
Yes, thank you. This property consists of lots 17 and 18 in Block 4 of the Oakwood Park subdivision, is approximately .31 acres. It has a 2,500 square feet residential structure, a one-vehicle detached garage, and concrete driveway. This neighborhood is primarily well-maintained, single-family homes. Oakwood Avenue has sidewalks on both sides of the street, from Bell Street to Central Avenue. The zoning surrounding the property on the north is R3, on the east is R3, on the south is R3, and on the west is R3. Surrounding land use on the north, east, south, and west sides are single-family residential. The application states the following as a proposed use: Develop multiple single-family townhomes that would encourage innovative adaptive reuse of the property. The property is surrounded by R3 low-density residential zoning and single-family homes. The nearest non-residential zone district is Zone CTR, and is approximately 381 feet to the east, near Central Avenue. Per Hot Springs Code Section, Hot Springs Code Section 162152 Table of Permitted Uses, the proposed dwelling townhouse use is prohibited in the current R3 low-density residential zone. It would be permitted in the requested CTR Commercial Transitional Zone, up to a 12-unit per acre density. That would result in probably three townhomes on the property as a permitted use. Again, the stated dwelling townhouse use is conceptual and non-binding. Should CTR zoning be established, any non-residential use or a residential density of over 12 units per acre would require conditional use consideration by Planning Commission. As stated in the previous item, the district promotes infill development in existing neighborhoods of the city. It encourages innovative adapted reuse projects. In order to protect neighborhood stability, Planning Commission carefully monitors development carried out in this district. The district exists to achieve the plan objectives of promoting positive development and redevelopment of mature areas of the city. Developments carried out in the district should promote the neighborhood or village image of the area. To this end, it is important that developments carried out in this district are in keeping with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. Typically, a CTR zone district provides a buffer between residential and commercial uses and zone districts. In this case, the subject land is surrounded entirely by residential use and zoning. Hot Springs Code Section 16230 regarding the size of new zones states, in order to circumvent spot zoning in the city, new zones shall consist of a minimum of two acres, with the exception of PD and CTR zone districts. These districts are permitted to be less than two acres to provide innovation and flexibility. The R4 zone district allows the same type and density of housing as CTR, up to 12 units per acre, and more may be allowed by conditional use approval. No R4 zoning exists in the immediate area. The subject parcel is smaller than two acres, and therefore, R4 zoning is not an option. R4 would not allow short-term residential rental at this time, whereas CTR would allow unlimited short-term rental. The standards for rezoning are that the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development or zoning, the change is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code, it implements an approved city plan, responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic land use, or other condition, it fulfills a demonstrated public need for land so zoned, or corrects an error in previous city action. The applicant permitted a five, submitted a five-page narrative describing the request in detail, building his case for Planning Commission consideration. The application narrative lists multiple excerpts from Hot Springs 2040 Forward Hot Springs Comprehensive Plan to provide a link between the plans, goals, strategies, and visions in this rezon request. The narrative concludes with the statement that zoning the property at 143 Oakwood from R3 to CTR would support the HS 2040 Forward Hot Springs Comprehensive Plan. This partially addresses the specific finding of implements and approved city plan. The HS 2040 Forward Hot Springs Comprehensive Plan identifies this area of Hot Springs as a near-town neighborhood, and the vision statement says that like the in-town neighborhoods, the near-town neighborhoods such as neighborhoods that surround Oaklawn can be revitalized over time to support higher housing densities, an enhanced image, and a better quality of place and economic opportunity. The plan also identifies multiple planning and performance criteria for the near-town neighborhoods. Multiple single-family townhomes could be consistent with the stated planning and performance criteria of a high mix of housing density to include duplexes, townhouses, multifamily, and mixed-use buildings. On the contrary, the proposed multiple single-family townhomes use appears to be inconsistent with the statement. It is important that developments carried out in this district are in keeping with the character of the surrounding neighborhood, as listed in Hot Springs Code Section 16249, CTR Commercial Transitional Concept and Description. Narrative addresses a specific finding for implements and approved city plan, however it fails to address any of the remaining listed specific findings of the code in Section 16211E1, including the lack of significant change in surrounding conditions or a public need for CTR zoning. This zone change request to CTR appears to be premature. Should the property be rezoned to CTR, it would afford the complete list of permitted and conditional residential and non-residential uses, as detailed in Section 162152 Table of Permitted Uses. CTR zoning would allow for unrestricted issuance of short-term rental residential, short-term residential rental licenses on the property. And the code does limit the number of licenses in the R3 zone district, and that number at this time would not allow for additional short-term rental application or licensing. The Planning Commission is required by code to use those standards in making their written recommendation to the Board of Directors, setting forth a basis for its recommendation. Public notice and recommend, and publication requirements listed in the code have been met, and the finding is that the request complies with the application requirements. The property's future land use map designation of residential medium-high does not support the requested CTR Commercial Transitional District zoning. The application fails to demonstrate significant change in surrounding conditions or a public need for CTR zoning, as required in Hot Springs Code Section 16211E1. The application fails to convincingly demonstrate that a zone change from R3 low-density residential district to CTR Commercial Transitional District complies with the stated concept and description for the CTR zone, as stated in Section 16249A. This zone change request to Commercial Transitional appears to be premature. The Hot Springs Code requirements for zone change are not met. The recommendation is that Planning Commission not recommend the Board of Directors approve an ordinance amending the zoning map from R3 low-density residential district to CTR, Commercial Transitional District, for the subject property, because the application fails to meet the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section 16211E. And that concludes the report.
Thank you very much, Director Solomon. Mr. Stoudt, do we have anybody signed up other than the applicant to speak on this? Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Goodson, please come forward and add anything that you would like to add that Director Solomon did not.
I can, I can.
But, just because we're.
I'm James Goodson again.
But, again, name and address, just so we can get it in the record, thank you so much.
The 143 Oakwood, I believe, is this one, 143 Oakwood. Yes, uh, well, basically the same thing, this one already has a place that can be refurbished, it's a multifamily dwelling already on it, so I was just trying to replace it with some better stuff. I can go ahead and refurb this one without having to wait, maybe with a, with possibly a rezoning deal later or something, because it's a big lot. I got, you know, I was just trying to make the area better, that is a very junky place. But, if junkie's what people want, junkie is what people will get. That's, uh, it is what it is, and I probably didn't do all my homework to come up with all the other stuff, but, uh, I was just trying to make it better, you know, so. It is what it is. The, apparently I don't have enough paperwork or something, and old plans or whatever, or.
I mean, we, we can say all the same things we just said before, so, I, you just.
Absolutely, but, you know, it's a multi-dwelling, it's, you know, it's like a three-unit deal, and it's just going to take so much to make it livable for, you know, undesirable neighbors, that's just what it's going to come down to, that's just what it is, so, you know, I'm just trying to make it better, so.
Well, we, we appreciate it, thank you so very much.
So, I guess we'll reapply whenever, you know, for half the lot, because it's a double lot, you know, I can do anything on the other side, so, you know, residential-wise, so. But, I appreciate y'all, and I just made the.
Thank you so very much, we do have some, those that want to come up and speak, so please hang around.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll call folks on the list as they have signed up. Just to clarify, as the applicant have five minutes, everybody else that comes up and wants to speak on this application, you do have three minutes. Ms., Robin Rutler?
Rutter?
Rutter, yes. Please come forward, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes. And please just address the Planning Commission, not the applicant.
My name's Robin Rutter, I live at 214 Oakwood Avenue, and I had a couple of questions and concerns. Obviously, I do think something needs to, something does need to be done to that property, but the rest of the, it's not consistent to put townhouses in a street that has single residence homes there. I also had questions, if we were looking at townhomes, how are they going to be managed? Are they going to be a POA, is it, is it for profit? I mean, I think some of the things, reading through all the documentation, I had a feeling that the HS 2040 was being leveraged to, for him to have the business case to put these townhouses in there, and if we're looking at neighborhoods, I'm thinking of parks and more sidewalks and, you know, cleaner houses, instead of townhouses, maybe put some houses in there that other people can come in and go to school and work at the casino and go downtown and basically, you know, enjoy the growth that Hot Springs is providing. And the other thing I was going to note, if you live on, around Oaklawn at all, parking during rice season, the streets are full, I, I think I would want to understand, where are these people for the three townhouses, how are they going to park, are they, will there be parking within that lot? Will there be more on the street, because at this point, we also deal with a lot of traffic, there's garbage when everybody leaves, we pick up garbage in our yard and our streets, but it's still okay, except when we get into this condensed area with three properties, how would that be managed? Those are, those are some of the questions I would have. How long would it take, I think, a year? I also have a concern, obviously, with property value, do townhomes bring property value? I really don't know, I'd have to probably maybe ask it the Realtor, but I know we look at comps when we're looking at market value for our properties, you know, square footage, heating and cool, all that kind of stuff. And my other thing was, it opens the door for residential properties to be rezoned commercial, so does that mean it opens the door even further for the next step, for somebody to come in? What if this gentleman sells these properties to the next person? I think that was referenced in a previous request. We, I kind of want to keep the consistency of the neighborhood, and it is a nice neighborhood, just FYI, except for that one property that needs to be cleaned up, but it's a very nice neighborhood, the streets are wide, nice families live there, retired people, I moved from North Little Rock and retired here, aloha Hot Springs, that's my home, and I want to keep the standard consistency of the homes, so. I think that was it on my notes.
Thank you very much. The next is Golden, Golden Lloyd. Hello, thank you, state your name and your address, you have three minutes.
Golden Lloyd, I live at 140 Oakwood, and I own 142 Oakwood as well. I don't know, I think Robin said everything that we're kind of concerned about is, is the opening of, of a door. This is definitely a residential neighborhood, the three houses on the same block as the The three houses on the same block as this house are all vacation rentals. We've had no problem with that. They're well taken care of. Every other house in the first two blocks of Oakwood is a family-owned home. So we're very concerned about, will it be townhouses? Will they be rentals? Will they be HUD certified? We don't know. And I'm not sure that Mr. Goodson even knows this part. This house is on the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality Houses. It was a meth house. And for anything to be done to this house, that department requires people going in with hazmat suits, testing the environment of the house, even for the house to be destroyed, to be brought down, and something else built in that spot would require their regulations also. So that's a real problem, and that's why that house is, has been sitting there like that since 2009. It's gone through three different owners. No one has done a thing about it except sell it to someone else. I don't even know if it's been disclosed as being on that list. Everyone in the neighborhood would love for something to be done about that property, but not this thing. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mike Kohler. Again, state your name, address, speak clearly into the microphone. You have three minutes to bring up anything that hasn't.
I live at 136 Oakwood. Pretty much everything I was going to say was covered by the previous ones, and I would just like to ask that you vote your recommendation. I'm not changing that to commercial because it does open the door up for maybe getting more, and it is a nice residential area. It's surrounded by residents, and that's basically all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So next on the list, we have two people signed up together. If one of you could just compile the notes, either John or Joanne, I'm going to destroy your last name, so I'll just let you come on up and... John and Joanne Fagankrantz?
Fagankrantz.
Fagankrantz.
They were a previous item.
Okay. Well, we'll skip right on ahead. Now we have Hallie Hilliard, I'm sorry.
That's a good attempt.
Yeah.
It's like Haley's comment. So Haley Hilliard, 214 Oakwood, heavy on the A. So thank you all for, you know, notifying some of the members of the neighborhood. Future consideration, I called several of my neighbors, 214 Oakwood, I think I said that, but called several of my neighbors and found that they had not received notification about this event tonight. And I think if, I would say maybe, I'd be surprised if one in five in the neighborhood actually received the notification about your event tonight, or we would have actually more representation about keeping this a residential neighborhood. I moved to Oakwood in 2018. I think it's a wonderful neighborhood. I've personally been involved in, you know, helping to restore the homes around the area, keeping it residential. So the homes around there have great character. I mean, anyone who loves hardwood floors, but we've been a part of helping improve Crestwood and Clark Street and Henderson and, you know, just helping, you know, the neighborhood has only grown. Many of us are members of what's called the Oaklawn Park Neighborhood Association, if you've ever heard of that. It's just a group of volunteers that we get together a couple of times a year and discuss how we can improve the neighborhood. That's how the bus stop got it to right on Central, is because we recognize that people were standing out in the rain when they're waiting on the bus. And so that's what's happening in the neighborhood. It's a sense of community, and we very much would love to keep it as residential. And I think there's great opportunities for homes like this or homes that were on Oaklawn that were mentioned earlier. They have great character, and you have, you know, buyers that want to make it a home, you know, and restore, you know, the home that's there because they have good bones. So just would ask that, you know, just future consideration to make sure we cast a broader net when we're inviting people to these sessions because I think you'll hear a greater voice about what a great neighborhood it is. And then certainly, yeah, just keeping it residential, I think would be great for the town. So, thank you.
Thank you so very much.
There's a sign also, there's a sign so everybody can see that there was a meeting.
So next on our list, we have Linda Smith.
Linda Smith, 150 Oakwood Avenue. I may repeat what was said because I can't hear what anybody's saying. I have the house that faces that house. I would love to wake up one morning and look out and see something other than what is there, but I don't want to look out and see a drive-through liquor store there or, you know, a high-rise apartment unit where people are coming and going all the time. I'd like to see it stay in the neighborhood that I purchased in, which was single-family homes, nice quiet neighborhood, sidewalks on each side of the street, traffic when the races are going on. Otherwise, it's very quiet. And I kind of like for it to remain that way. I don't want to see, I don't want to see this residential area that I'm living in turn into a commercial park. And I think when you get one in, you've got a foot in the doorway for more to be there. So I really would like to see it stay residential. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our list, we have George. Please state your name, your address.
George Pritchard, 207 Crestwood. I live over on Crestwood and right behind Linda that just spoke, her house. I think the realistic thing is, it's unfortunate that we're a year or so away from some code changes that might make this a more palatable thing for you folks to decide on. I mean, this property could be, as the gentleman stated, he could remodel it. That would mitigate a tremendous cost of the cleaning up from the meth that'd just be part of it and have a three-unit or four-unit, four people renting in there. So sometimes we have to be careful what we want to wish for. Another possibility is split up the property and put a new, new house on the facing Oakwood and using that house behind it, remodeling it. It might give him the same type of income in the future or property values. But we do have to be careful. I don't like the idea of short-term rentals. We have a lot of short-term rentals in the neighborhood now. I also have some condos that have short-term rentals. They're a real pain in the rear, and it's just a continual thing, and you call the police, it doesn't matter. So I would just say we've got to be careful what we wish for, and Ms. Selman, I hope we get that new code soon so that it addresses this kind of thing because short of him putting property in front of it and converting that, there's not much else to do, or he can sell the property, or somebody else will try it.
Thank you very much. Last on our list, signed up to speak is Mr. Kent Westmoreland. Please state your name and address. You have three minutes to address the Planning Commission.
Thank you. My name's Kent Westmoreland. I live at 201 Oakwood. It's the other property to the west of this house. Everything that everyone has stated is the same concerns I have. Primarily, I have young children, and I live directly across from that residence, and, you know, Oaklawn traffic notwithstanding, having something commercial there obviously is, opens it up to things that could be potential issues for my family and my children. They walk to Oaklawn School for, to ride the bus, and they walk back. So, you know, any type of commercial development there is putting that at risk. Someone spoke about our Oaklawn Park Neighborhood Association. One of the things that we did was get the sidewalk that runs on my property on Bell extended all the way up to the Oaklawn School, well, up to Oaklawn because there were children constantly going back and forth in that. And so having a safer path for those children to navigate to, you know, wherever they're going, school, church, home, not impeded by, again, you know, his intentions for a residential dwelling are great, but opening it up with the potential, like you said, of not being, you know, other things down the road, some advisor decides to put in a, whatever. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Shall we let the applicant answer any questions? But it, I mean, regardless, it's still zoning.
The questions regarding townhomes rented, owned, parking, and that kind of thing are things that would come up at the time of a site plan and are not things that would be considered at this point. At this time, the only thing under discussion is whether to change the zoning on the land. So...
Also state that, you know, these were not going to be used for short-term rentals at all, and part of the parking, that they would have garages that people could pull in, it would be safe that they would park their cars.
Right. And at this time, we're not considering that. That...
We're only looking at the use of the land. And every question, every concern that everybody spoke about, thank you for doing that because you have passion about your neighborhood, and we do appreciate that. All of that goes under what use or site plan, whatever wants the zoning is approved or not approved. So we, your concerns, we have those too, and so that's why we have an amazing director. She covers all of those, but we're just looking at the land use right now as far as zoning.
I can address the matter of notice. Notice by code is required to go to owners within 200 feet. So, no, I'm sure that you know people who did not get a notice, but everyone within 200 feet of this property should have received something. And we also post a notice in the newspaper, and there is a sign in front of the property. So...
There's a sign.
Yep. Yep.
At this portion, I believe the...
There's a big sign.
I mean, at this time, I think the public portion to this item is closed.
Yeah, if we could just close the audience discussion and let Planning Commission proceed.
Yes. Planning Commission, do you have any questions, concerns, comments that we'd like to share amongst ourselves or...
No additional questions that we haven't already addressed in the previous application, I think, at least for myself. No questions.
I would like to have a discussion, not necessarily now, but bringing up the toxicity of the land and the environmental hazard. That's not something that we've dealt with or I've dealt with.
And that is not anything over which we have jurisdiction.
Okay.
That is a matter of the state.
Got you. Would this be considered a brownfield?
You'd have to ask the state.
Gotcha.
I do not know. We don't have any authority there.
Okay. Questions?
I do, but I'll...
No questions.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Stoudt, will you please call the role? And the motion is to approve with staff findings and recommendation, and the recommendation is to not recommend to the Board of Directors to approve an ordinance amending the zoning map.
So this is, like the previous item, a yes vote recommends that this not go to the Board for approval.
Thank you very much.
Walker?
No, I'm sorry. Yes.
These are hard.
Erickson?
I approve not to approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Kirke?
Approve.
Davis?
Approved.
Hobby?
Approved. Thank you very much.
Okay, so this item two is appealable. It will not proceed to the Board of Directors unless you appeal it. And if you, if you would like to proceed with an appeal, an email to Mr. Stoudt will get that going, and he will get with you in approximately a week to let you know what is needed there. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Director Selman, will you please present the Director's Report?
Yes. Does everyone have a copy of this memo? Dawn is not here. Okay, so maybe you don't. All right. This is a memo that City Attorney Brian Albright wrote to the Board of Directors and Planning Commissioners in 2012, and this covers the topic of ex parte contacts. An ex parte contact is a communication that occurs outside of the hearing room. So when you, as a planning commissioner, make a decision, you are basing it on the official record that is before the entire planning commission. If someone calls you on certain kinds of items, and I think we talked briefly about one of those kinds of items, and that was conditional uses, because those are quasi-judicial, there can be no communication about that application outside of this room. So if we're, if we're going to talk about a conditional use, because the, only the record of what happens in this room can be considered, no ex parte communication. An ex parte just means, I'm out there, I'm running wild. We don't do that. So there are other types of things that you handle that are legislative. When we look at the new zoning code, for example, that will be a legislative act. You will be making a recommendation to the Board about what things need to be in that code, what they need to say. That is legislative. You can talk to anybody about that. It can be at home, it can be after church, it can be at Kroger, you know, it can be while you're playing soccer. It can be anytime, anywhere on a legislative matter. So that's entirely different from a conditional use. We'll make sure that each of you gets a copy of this. I think it's something that you'll want to refer to. It has references to Arkansas cases that have been settled on this matter, where somebody said, I don't think you did it the right way. I want to make sure that you've got that, that you know that on conditional uses, you know, zip your lips and cone of silence, but on something that is legislative, you can go for it. Find opinions from anyone you're wondering about, and that's okay. So we'll get this memo to you probably by Monday. It's several pages, probably looks like nine pages, in excellent reading if you're trying to get to sleep, probably. But it's got information that you need to have, and we want to do what's right, and we want to do it in a way that's right. So we'll get this out to you. Do you have any questions about that?
No.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Thank you for taking the time to go through a packet that was very long, very detailed, and making sure that you were prepared to make that good decision tonight. So thank you very much.
And Director, yes?
Do I need to come up there? Well, what I don't know is, if the applicant decides to appeal, what is, what's the process then? Does it come back to this commission, or does it go straight to the Board?
That's a great question. It will go straight to the Board. We'll post a sign again.
Okay.
They will publish the agenda. The Board will...
The Board Agenda?
Yes. If you are interested in receiving notice of those agendas, you can sign up on the city's website, which is cityhs.net. There's a tab that I think says subscribe. You hit that tab, and there's a whole bunch of choices of things you can, can receive automatically. You hit that tab, and there's a whole bunch of choices of things you can receive automatically.
We won't get a letter again on this?
I think we do the same notice on an appeal that we do to a Planning Commission item. So you should get a letter if you got a letter.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Great question. Director Selman, I do want to say thank you for, you know, encouraging us to go to the banquet. It was really nice.
It was great.
It was really great. The fact that it hasn't been done really in such a long time.
Yeah.
But it was really nice to hear our city manager thank us for, you know, the time and effort that we do put in, and, you know, we're all here as volunteers for them. And it's just, it was really nice to see the thank you back, so. I know you have to kind of like.
I'll convey that.
Heard me like you do cats to do some things, but I think those of us that went really, really enjoyed it, so.
I'm glad you did. I mean, you serve without any compensation. It takes a ton of time to get ready for the meeting. You come, you listen carefully, and this is time that you could be doing something else if you weren't committed to being here and committed to your city.
And if you don't know how many things she runs, it's a lot. Like, I don't even know, but, I mean, her page of recognizing was a full page. So we're just honored to have you as our director.
Thank you.
I mean, at this point, if there's no further business, I'd like to go ahead and adjourn the meeting, so can I have a motion in a second to adjourn? So moved? So moved? Second?
And second.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.